Okay, perfect. All right, all rise for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I don't think we need to take roll call, but the meeting is called to order. Is there anyone from Martin Estates here? I don't see anyone else online. What about Edgewood Pond? I don't see anyone here or online from Edgewood Pond. Public comment? Lori?
I'm sorry, I'm standing here.
Stan, you may want to come up a little bit closer so we can hear you on the... Not to put you on the spot, but hear you on the recording.
Hello, my name's Lori Welkway. I'm currently rising for Eletown supervisor. I'm currently Eletown trustee. We do a lot of work with the health works in the Village of Long Grove. And I know a lot of you from my work when I go downtown Long Grove. I still have a lot of time in Long Grove and always promote Long Grove. Just wanted to say hi and we're doing coffees and conversations. I also want to be at Long Grove Coffee on Friday. We have a website if you're interested, but just wanted to introduce myself and this is all you do for Long Grove.
At your service, thank you. Any other comments in the room?
How many candidates voted? How many candidates?
Um, just me and the current president.
Ah.
All right, no more public comment. Um, uh, Kaiser is...
Hey, right? Got the flu.
Got the flu, so I don't know if anyone has any questions. Better to have him at home than here.
Flu, flu.
Hmm? Um, I would not call it that, but uh, he's not feeling... So, um, if there's no questions on that, I'm going to move to the consent agenda. There is several items on it. There's the approval of the November twenty-four Treasury report, approval of the December twenty-twenty-four Treasury report, approval of the board's meeting minutes from the January fourteenth meeting, subject to non-substantial division, and that is it. Any questions? Anyone want to make a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Moved by trustee Borowski. Okay, by trustee Tenucci, roll call please.
Trustee Borowski.
Hi.
Trustee Tenucci.
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee O'Reilly.
Hi.
Okay, motion to carry. Next item on the agenda is a discussion, consideration of requests for funding by the Midwest Sustainability Group. Um, are you going to make a presentation? It says you are.
One time.
Okay, an update. Wouldn't mind giving us an update. There's an ask for more funding and I did you describe what all happened there or we can fill in the blanks if you don't, so go ahead.
I hope Chris has the numbers in front of him. I didn't bring them and I was just making sure you all had them.
We do.
But when last we met, we did the funding that was available in the budget and we were still short eleven thousand some dollars. And we decided to go ask Hawthorne Woods to make up the difference. So we met, follow us with Hawthorne Woods, I think, that was... I haven't seen them since then. So Hawthorne Woods came up with an additional five thousand dollars. So they had already committed five thousand dollars to our twenty-twenty-five budget. They thought they could come up with more, but they at least came up with five thousand more, so we're still six thousand something short. I don't know if you've got the exact numbers here.
Six thousand five hundred and forty, that sounds right?
Yeah.
Yes.
And then, I kind of want to give you an update as long as I was here. There's actually a lot of progress in the last thirty days, I guess. Um, so CMAP, some of you know, so we're trying to get the trail and all this...
Has been...
...and that's what we're looking for back then. They asked CMAP to help them. So CMAP has been having these high level meetings and it's been really trying to stall there for a while, but all of a sudden there's movement. Uh, they have put together two leaders at CMAP, their deputy director and their deputy of planning, who are going to be shepherding this through. And they got a commitment from the Lake County Board to do the local outreach. So Matt, who is the assistant administrator for Lake County Board, is going to be shepherding the local outreach group. Um, and so they've put up proposals and then they send it back to IDNR for approval. We're not sure, because the governor comes out with his budget very shortly, if we need to re-appropriate a million dollars or that's... I, we, it's our understanding, as soon as DNR signs off, they're going to send out an RFP for the planning and this thing's going to start to happen. I could use some feedback from you all, delve into details of what the local outreach looks like. So we want this to be a voting body. Our thoughts were we'd like it to be the same people that are on the task force, because we already hashed that all out, it seems logical. Maybe remove Illinois EPA, because they don't really have standing there. Do you all support that? Do you agree with that? I don't know, you don't have to hash it out right here, but we'd like some feedback from you. That gets all the villages to have input there. And do we want this to be a voting body? How do we want these details to work out? And then the last bit of information, you probably already know Senator McConkey resigned, so that's a big blow for us, because he was a big supporter.
Oh, why did he resign?
Uh, I don't know the details.
I did not hear that.
We all kind of saw you.
Was it in the papers that...
This afternoon.
Oh, it just happened this afternoon, I'm like, no wonder I know that.
He resigned from what? I'm sorry, I don't know.
Um, he's an Illinois state senator.
Oh, so are you... Oh, that role, okay.
He's been very good to Long Grove.
Yeah.
Or maybe he went on to pursue a movie career.
No, actually, it's um, an advocacy institute for accessibility, it said in the paper.
Oh, interesting.
Okay, got it. Guess I have to read the paper during the day when I'm working.
I didn't know that, okay.
Yeah, so that's a big blow for us. My understanding is that the Republican Party of, I think, of Cook, Lake, and McHenry County will make the appointment for his accessibility.
And his terms over when, in two years?
Twenty...
He's up in the next general election now.
Yeah, next general election, okay, got it.
So, don't know if that'll be somebody who supports this work or not, that's a big question mark, because he represents most of the corridor.
Right, okay.
Who made that decision?
Uh, the Republican Party of Lake...
Oh.
I think he's got just a tiny couple, like two precincts something in McHenry.
Yeah, it's multiple. All right.
Okay, um, so what do you want to tackle first? There was a question about the... What's the group going to be called, the Land Planning Group? What are they going to call it?
They wanted to call it a task force. We've been calling it, our working name for it is a working group, because we don't...
Working group, okay.
We're trying to make it a less... Our vision is it's a less formalized, same people at the table, and we just bring all our concerns and we come to consensus.
Does anyone have any thoughts on how that should be run?
Well, it worked well the last time.
Mm-hmm.
I will tell you, the fact that there had to be a vote at the end, it took a lot of time, hundreds of hours of work, getting Mundeline to vote right, it was just a lot of work. So, that's why we'd rather not have a vote, just have it be consensus, but...
How do you gauge consensus?
Well, that's a good question. I don't know. I don't know.
That's as sticky as voting.
With the Blue Ribbon Commission, they did a final vote. They agreed on everything by consensus, and then at the end they did a final vote on the final plan.
Isn't that what we did on the task force?
Yeah.
And there were two dissenters, as I recall.
Two and Ida, no, two abstained and one abstained.
Abstention is a yes, so, yeah.
So, then we also have a problem with the one-twenty bypass federal study. We were unable to get a federal waiver, even though Congressman Snyder had his top person on it, because of the one-twenty study, because there's a federal study going on, and the one parcel at the top of the fifty-three quarter in that study area, they, we were ineligible for waiver. So I have a call on February thirteenth with the head of CMAP to figure out how, what we do next.
Is that the highway funds waiver or a different waiver?
Yes, on the use of... What I was able to glean, I will say, federal highway administration and IDOT are two of the most close-knit organizations I've ever met in my life. They won't talk to you, you just can't... Anyway, I could call EPA and someone would talk to me or tell me who I could talk to, or they don't talk to you. But from what I could gather, every parcel has an agreement between the state and federal highway administration about what you can do with it. And it goes parcel by parcel. Um, we're going to hash that out.
Yeah, but not all, not all of the parcels have been purchased by great state of Illinois. And we don't yet know how many of those parcels are out there, right?
We do know. I forgot the number. They told us on the task force, I think it was twenty-four or something like that. The vast majority of them, what I remember, is the vast majority of them were owned by real estate investors speculating around fifty-three. So they felt, DNR, this is DNR's analysis, they felt like they would probably be willing to sell that, you know? So, but the problem is, there's a federal highway designation on the corridor, but no one can sell those parcels that they don't own yet. As soon as that gets removed, there's a lot of legalities, we've got lawyers working on that, that is, they can sell it for development right in the middle. So, the conservation organizations, open lands, and Lake County Forests, I met with Jessica Willis, like today, who's the new chair of Lake County Forests, are already starting talks to determine, are they going to take some of those into conservation easement as possible? And I think they're the disposal, there's a way IDOT has to dispose of things. It goes back to the owner, original owner of the property, for right of first refusal, but the villages get to weigh in there too, which, you know, for you guys could be good, for Mundeline I don't think is really bad, so I don't have to worry about that too.
I don't understand that.
The parcels that are not owned by IDOT, if we remove the federal corridor designation, for instance, if they transfer it, we think that designation has to come off. Then, those parcels that we don't own can go to the highest bidder, but there's a process. They have to go through a certain order, but the first person they have to go to is the person they got the parcel from, and they get right of first refusal. Then I think they go to the county and then the village, or the other way around. I'd have to look at my notes on that, but there's a process they go through.
But so, they're, they're in it for the investment, shall we say, I would presume, so why wouldn't they buy it back? Why, why would they just walk away? I don't, I don't get that.
Well, some of these people, yeah, I don't know. I don't know, there's some private ownership in there. I know there's a couple of parcels in Mundeline that developers have been wanting to develop toward Winchester Road from there. I've seen proposals on that, but I think that went away now or not, I don't, I can't tell you.
Yeah, Mundeline wants the land behind the high school.
Yeah, I mean, that's, we've talked about that. Our planners that we talked to said there's plenty of room for a trail and soccer fields for them, so they can go along there. There's some debate about whether they should just be given the land for soccer fields, but most people think IDNR should hold it and lease it to them, so it can be a public amenity, so that'll be worked out in the working, or task force.
So are the people that were on the task force still breathing and in jurisdictions?
As far as I know. We haven't talked to the villages in Mundeline, but Great Lakes is interested. I believe you're interested, Hawthorne Woods is interested. Lake County Partners would love to get on.
I'm sure. Build that road.
So...
Okay, so we have that, and then we also, just going back to the funding request, I'm sure there's questions? Does anyone have questions about it?
Yeah, I have questions about the funding. So, back at our November twelfth meeting, you indicated so much funding you needed through the end of January. We approved some of that, asked you to go to Hawthorne Woods for the remainder. Hawthorne Woods offered five thousand. Now I understand your estimates for the difference, which is sixty-five forty. So according to the discussion on November twelfth, that'll take you through the end of January, which is four days from now. Do you anticipate additional needs during the next three months, which is the final three months of our fiscal year?
Yes, so this is largely for grassroots work, so we're going to use, drag that out into February. And we have an owner who's going to be talking to us in the next couple of days about some grassroots funding after that, to tide us over for a minute.
Okay, so you don't think you'll need to come back asking for any, for the rest of our fiscal year?
June, or May or June? I prefer to go to the calendar, May, okay, yeah. Yeah, no, we don't.
And then, I'm sure you're already working on this, but we'd like some indication as to what you think the needs will be for our next fiscal year, for our budgeting process, which is...
Quickly approaching, yeah. I'm already spreadsheeting away.
Okay.
Trustee O'Reilly, did you have some?
Yeah, um, refresh my memory as to who is a contributor, like us.
Wealth donors, so Hawthorne Woods is doing ten thousand dollars and the rest we have from private donors.
Wow, ten thousand. What'd they do the year before?
Only five.
Oh.
So we opted.
You know, and then, and then one other question before I make a comment. Who is opposing one-twenty?
You mean who wants it? Who wants the bypass?
Who, who's opposing the creation of one-twenty?
Um, we oppose the bypass, because...
And then, and then who, who with that thinking is paying into the...
We have private donors for that, so you guys don't fund the one-twenty bypass, although they're related, as I just said, because it's considered one federal, but we have other donors, private donors, donate for our one-twenty.
Okay, so, so everybody else, all the municipalities are just sucking up off of...
Yeah, I suppose Great Lakes might be more amenable after the date is, if she's elected, but um...
But they haven't been forthcoming.
Yeah, but Mundeline, I don't, they have an election too, they're having a mayor coming in, but I don't know where they're going.
Well, proverbial straw that breaks the camel's back. I think for me, this is it. If Hawthorne Woods can't pony up the difference that saved us from our, our budget, and it's been so cheap, I mean, I do believe there are some Hawthorne Woods residents who would be strongly impacted by a road, and yet their administration seems to not consider them.
We do have it as a goal to talk to them, because they go on a calendar of your budget. By the time we reached out, when did we have that meeting? Was it November?
I thought it was December, wasn't it?
It's like mid, no, I think it was before Thanksgiving.
Before Thanksgiving, yeah.
So it's our goal to work with them now, while they're developing their twenty-twenty-six budget, to make sure they can do more. But it's fair.
It would have been fair the year before, and the year before that, and the year before that, seeing how much we have contributed. And, and, and don't misunderstand, I have a very healthy respect for what you do. I don't know many people who could continue to do what you do, but there's a sense of fairness, and, and this isn't fair.
Yeah, we did talk when we had that meeting in November, that they would, the villages would start sitting down together. They agreed to wait till after the next municipal election, because they had two new mayors. So that might be an opportunity, if there's regular meetings of the villages, to impress upon them that they should be...
But, but a hundred and seventy thousand dollars is a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, no matter how you cut it, it's a lot of money. And we've got a lot of community members who go rip past the throes. I do, I've been involved in it since the eighties, so a lot of people love the idea of accomplishing what you're trying to do. But this, this is, it's just the ultimate cheap. And I don't know that, that their community knows that they are being cheap. Ask the people on Seneca, are your villagers supporting...
Oh, no, Lori and Anna, we have two members of our team that live...
No, no, I'm saying, ask, ask the residents of Seneca, is your, is your community supporting this issue? And they probably don't know that they aren't. So, that's my, my guess.
Other comments?
For what it's worth, I was at the meeting, we exerted a lot of enthusiasm, shall we say?
Yours or theirs?
Well, we got five thousand more, for what it's worth.
Didn't you feel like writing a check out for them? You know, if you're left cheap and you're dead poor, for God's sake, I'll pay for it.
Well, the mayor had a last minute glitch in his schedule, so his administrator came.
Other comments? Silent?
Kind of silent. I, I just want a more comprehensive plan going into next, next, next budget. I mean, this kind of piecemeal ad hoc approach, to me, is just not appropriate.
I, I think once the new mayors are in place, there's, for me, there's hope that we can come together as a coalition and get it...
And if I'm that mayor, I'm going to say, hey, Long Grove's been footing us on much of getting involved in this deal. Thanks for coming, Lori.
Well, we get a lot, have gotten a lot of support from Graves Lake residents, Hawthorne Woods residents, and Mundeline residents, when we table different fairs and festivals, and there are a lot of people out there who are for this. I don't know that they're aware of what their village position is, and there's going to be a substantial change in leadership in the community, so that, for me, that's a glimmer of hope we can get more neighbors involved in this.
To answer your question, I think next year we will have a better idea. We're always reacting to that, you never know what could happen, but I think once the plan starts going, the working groups start going, we're going to have a better idea for this next year, for what's happening.
All right, let me, let me ask, let me ask the question, what happens if we don't give you the money? What happens?
Then we can't do the work.
And what could that, what risk would that...
We have some, like I said, some funding coming in, but that's got to last until May, so it'll be, you know, like half the work, so...
Will you take an eye of you?
Well, we've been kind of working on it.
So just to be clear, what dollar amount are we actually...
Six thousand five hundred and forty, I believe.
And that gets us through the end of April into May.
Right.
Would consider the budget dollars for next year, too?
I was fully prepared to vote no tonight, but seeing it's year twenty-twenty-five, and that road should have been completed in the year two thousand, and we're very grateful it hasn't been, I'm very grateful this activity continues and maybe there's light at the end of this tunnel, so make that motion to approve the funding on the dollar amount, I could see six thousand, whatever.
Five forty.
Second.
Okay, moved by trustee Borowski. Second by trustee O'Connor. Roll call please.
Trustee Borowski.
Hi.
Trustee O'Connor.
Hi.
Trustee O'Reilly.
No.
Trustee Tenucci.
Yeah, that's how I feel.
Let me help you. Let me help you.
There's no question I support this offer, but I feel like I have to vote my conscience and that's no.
Um, I guess I'll vote yes. Yes.
It still matters.
Not enough, I know, yeah, so, I guess the answer's no then, Ryan, unless somebody changes their position.
So what's the...
We need a concurrence of a majority of the members of the board. We have seven members, which means we have to have four either in favor, or in this case, because we don't have a full majority. If we had an abstention, as opposed to two nays, that would carry the vote. I'm not suggesting it would change their vote, I'm just suggesting how it would calculate.
So procedurally, that's wonderful. If this thing fails tonight, can it reappear when we...
Yes.
Yes, it can come back.
We spent five thousand Christmas lights.
Just for the night, huh?
I, I, I've changed my vote. I like the abstention better than the, than the, but I hope it sends a message that, that we're not a gravy train, we're, we're just, you know, so...
Um, do we need to re-vote, or is that just good enough?
Uh, I think that the record can simply reflect that trustee O'Reilly changed her vote from nay to abstain, and that causes the motion to carry.
So reflected.
All right, thank you. Motion carried. Okay, discussion, consideration, resolution approving the twenty-twenty-five HDLDBA special event application and the twenty-twenty-six, twenty-twenty-seven special event dates. Now, before I begin, um, right before I got here, hold on, before I got here, I got a call from Mike Mar saying that, um, he looked at the resolution, um, where for his event there would be ninety parking spots, you know, the whole thing that's in the resolution, the, the hangars for people to get in, that he, he's not in agreement with it. That we thought Chris worked something out, or thought we worked something out between, you know, you and...
Can I, can I take a few minutes to talk to everyone who's...
Sure, you can, I just want to make sure I set this up properly, because one of the things I just want to, one of the things we could do is, we could also table it for another meeting, need be, or, you know, we can make the vote tonight. So go ahead and do that, I just wanted to make sure I put that out there. Go ahead.
Before you do that, Ryan, just a moment, can you elaborate on the reasoning behind that, beside, or was there any reasoning?
Well, so he said that he's, yeah, so he said that he spoke with his client, and they're not really excited about having the wedding with, at the same time as the festival. And then he also said he's very concerned that, he's concerned that he'll be able to get the people in, as, as said, right, that they will have access into the parking lot. He's explaining that during other festivals, he couldn't get even his workers to his brewery, and so he doesn't have any confidence that this will work out. So that's, that's why he's taking that position.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Yeah.
So today's topic goes, so I've actually been talking to Chris about that. So auxiliary, we have a decision to close, to turn left. We've told them that we have to stay there. We've asked the builder to sign a letter to the auxiliary and sheriff to say, that needs to be a dedicated spot where they can turn left at any point. So the sheriff overstepped where they should have. When we're there, they open it so people can turn left, when we walk away, they make it so people can go there with safety issues, because they make you drive all the way down. People try U-turn and it becomes an issue. So, that's that situation. But overall, I want to give you the history of this particular email. So, twenty-twenty-three, John Compecky, as he was coming up on board, sent a preliminary email saying, let's look at the preliminary dates moving forward. Our association always works on preliminary dates until October of the year before, which then we send those to the village for approval of our partnership. So Mike Mar looked at a preliminary email saying preliminary dates, and we ran into one other issue with this chocolate fest last year, who originally, it showed that it was going to be Memorial Day. He said, no, no, that whole email is incorrect, those aren't the right dates. Prior to Mike booking this wedding, two days before, I told him again, Mike, those dates are not correct, the dates are here, he proceeded to book this wedding. So, again, the process that we do, we put preliminary dates out there. This year, what you guys have is a proposed date to make these dates hard dates for the next three years, and then after one year, we'll have another year, so that as we have these events, weddings, with the season's location, with all the other locations, everyone can have a three-year hard date. But with, with Mike, now there is no negotiation, it's all or nothing. We've gone through many different versions of accommodations, but as you're aware, we have to give you dates, and nothing is in stone until you approve them, and that happens every October, November. So for Mike to hold this, that this is my date, he was, he was the prior president for our role for three years. He understands the process. There's no way he should be dictating to this town that you do it this day or not. I mean, it's, it's people that he's trying to do this. We've accommodated, we're closing down a lot to make sure he can accommodate his, this wedding party. We offer him part of the church parking lot, we offer him the seal lot to where they can park there, we have it closed up. There is no option that he's acceptable. We can't close and shut down Strawberry Fest for one business where it affects fifty other businesses in town, you know, and moving these dates has an impact to us financially, where if we get too close to Chocolate Fest, people don't come out, it's such a big spend. We need that additional week. I just, if he wants to file two, let him file two. He was a prior board member, he understands the process. Let, let them explain to court that, so Mike Mar, you were a prior president, you understand the process that has gone on for twenty-plus years? Yes, I do. Then what's changed this year? And to be, to have this extended this, this amount of time, it's unbelievable. And I apologize, I would have been here last meeting. I think Chris, I was told, no, no, don't worry about coming to this, otherwise I would have been here last week to be in this discussion, so I apologize. I just, we're doing everything we can, you know, it's going to be an impact to us still to have that lot closed, but we're going to make it work, you know, and, and we're going to make it work so that he'll have... You know, and, and we're gonna make it work so that he'll have his wedding party there. We've asked Chris to reach out to, to go to, which I think he has. Um, and we want it not just for this, but for all events, to make sure they just don't, that here's, here's the, here's the way we're gonna have parking in this town, or in and out of, out of different lots. They, they shouldn't determine that, we should based on the, the need of the town. Um, we ask that you, you approve the dates, if, if you file suit, we'll, we'll deal with that. Again, I think we have a strong enough case, uh, because when he did this last year, he, he received an email, and it clearly said in that email, that email was incorrect, which included these dates as well.
Thanks, Ryan, for your comments, appreciate it. All right, um, so you have a four, you have a resolution to approve all the dates. I don't know, um, what you all wanna do.
Now, we're doing three years, or just?
Three years, yeah.
You're gonna approve the event application for this year, and then the dates within the two years following that? And then every year around this time, all the event applications will come in, well, before this, this is a little later than normal. Uh, will come in and you'll approve the annual applications, like we do now.
May I make a tangential question, or offer a tangential? We still, as far as I know, we still don't have a process in place to make our festivals zero landfill. And I know we've kinda kicked that around, brought it up a couple times over the years, but I'm not sure we're there. Um, are we there, are we at zero landfill festivals now, or not?
I don't think that's ever a possibility.
Well, I would say that because Waste Management hosts four hundred thousand people at the, at the golf tournament next week at zero landfill. Hundred percent recyclable or compostable, and they do it for four hundred thousand people.
In the winter?
In, in Phoenix.
Oh, God, okay. No wonder, no wonder they don't have a problem.
No, they can do it when it comes out.
There's somebody there. I'm kidding you.
Zero landfill for the entire event, so it's all recyclable or compostable. Can we, like, put something in place that we can get there?
That budget, that budget to work, much greater, I mean, you're talking a lot of different monies and dollars that have to go into create that. It's, it's something we don't have in the budget to be able to coordinate that with making sure there's, everyone carries certain products and materials that.
Well, I'm not saying it needs to be a hundred percent, but I think we need that goal and, and stuff moving towards.
Exactly, exactly, we need a goal.
Baby steps, so maybe just twenty percent this year I'll be having, right, every year. So I, I don't know how we get there, so, or, or if the board even wants to get there. I mean, if the board cares, um, you know, it seems like the right thing to do from an environmental perspective. I don't think it's crazy, over-the-top request. It seems like it's a trend, you know.
So, let me, let me ask this question, Ryan. Would the HDL GBA work to reduce, uh, you know, landfill materials at their festivals, right? And that's all we could put in the resolution, that, uh, they'll work in good faith to try to reduce the amount that goes in.
I mean, we can try to request that they try to use as much recyclable material as possible. Um, challenge is, is it's not sorting, everything goes into trash bins, so you're gonna get mixed garbage in there, which is, is when you're trying to have recyclable versus not recyclable, there's, we do have, you know, aluminum only, but when the people are in the event, it all rose in the same trash receptacle, there's no sorting that goes on, and then it goes in the dumpsters. But how they can do that a hundred percent, it can be a challenge, because you've got some folks that sell ceramic aluminum cans, you've got some folks that are serving out of plastic, you have some that are, that are serving paper for their food material, there's so many varieties of material.
But, but, but if there was a, a can for can, and a can for, um, plastic bottles, at least would be something. If I had the choice between putting it in a, in a, a, a general receptacle, or putting it in one that says can, I'm gonna do the can.
So, we, we could try to allocate a few of those bins in the food area to help that, yes, we could do that. There's no fault, how, how are, and who are we gonna get to pick them up?
Well, so, but, don't figure it out tonight, but, don't figure, don't, don't, don't figure it out tonight. I mean, I think we, as the board, could say that you, you know, we're gonna, as part of the requirement of approving this, is that the HDL GBA will work to reduce the amount of landfill waste, um, that comes out of the festivals. How that gets done, that's pretty innocuous, and then it starts the whole dialogue, and then it's a discussion every year, right? I mean, if that gets?
With, 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 um, goals, with, with some markers?
Mm-hmm.
That, that by April, we'll have a report, this is what we're gonna be doing, kind of thing.
Okay.
Well, it's in an amount, we're gonna reduce it by half a percent?
They don't, they don't know yet. They don't, they don't know yet.
They don't know what they have, just, they're all waiting.
It makes sense that, A, as part of, one of the things that's in this resolution is that there will be communications between HDL GBA and, uh, and Chris for these various things. And maybe what we can say is that, uh, tho- those conversations will include, um, waste disposal and recycling. And that for future years, there will be at least a plan as to how to further reduce the amount of solid waste. Not putting any, I, I, I don't, I, I, I think that, first you have to think about it, before you're gonna be able to make any kind of, uh, outcomes. So maybe if we make sure that at least there's a plan in place, and then we can have a conversation about the plan, but we probably won't be able to get that till next year. In the meantime, conversations can start with Chris, which may actually generate some thoughts for the future plan. I, I, you know, obviously, that's a short reach, but somebody said earlier something about baby steps. I think that this might be a necessary baby step to move this on.
But there's no reason that, that an attempt can't be made this year.
I, I agree, that's, that's the point, that instead of making them have a plan, which I don't know that they're gonna be able to generate right now, they're gonna have to include that in their conversations with Chris in the lead-up to each of these events, and we can put that in the resolution.
You can work with that, right?
I, I can find out what resources we, we could make available, I, I don't know.
You know, I know, so we're not saying make a decision tonight, just, will you work with us?
I'd like to talk about the original question.
But, but it's something we, we want done.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I agree. You agree? Yeah.
Something measurable.
Yep.
So, we're done with that, the facts that Ryan has presented them, to me, are compelling. It was pretty clear, the HDL GBA did what they needed to do, and.
Well, I mean, I mean, we could, we could.
My interpretation.
We, you know, we could approve everything except that.
So my question is, he's already stated his intent for a lawsuit. If we approve these dates, it seems like we will become a party to that lawsuit, which will use staff time and resources and all of that. Or will it? Maybe that's a question for Vic, are we?
I think there's, I think there's a couple of things, yeah, I, I, I mean, I think it's a legitimate question and, and a concern. First, I would note that in the absence of the festival, that is a public parking lot, and there's no assurance that they would get ninety spaces for that wedding at that parking lot. And they don't know where within that parking lot, if anywhere, parking spaces will be available. So, there is a, there is a, an implicit assumption that, that there's a right for that wedding to occupy a stempel lot, and there isn't. And so, um, one of the things that, in the context of a festival, the village can and has routinely done is to put dibs, if you will, on the stempel parking lot. And here, we're actually giving dibs not only to the HDL GBA, but also to the brewery for its wedding, that it otherwise wouldn't have. So, under the plan that's reflected in the resolution, there is a greater assurance for the brewery than there would be if there were no festival at all. Um, so that's trying to give some context to all of this. You know, I, I understand that there certainly has been disagreements as to who told who, what, when, and that there's disappointment, and probably annoyance and all of that. But putting that aside, the fact of the matter is, is that that is a public lot, and unless the village, in the context of a special event, gives somebody dibs, nobody has any dibs. And what is proposed is to give them ninety spaces that they actually have assured, which is far greater assurance than they would have in the absence of Strawberry Fest. So, my perspective on it, and, you know, I, I, it's just my perspective, is that if, in fact, the brewery wants to have some reserved parking for their wedding, the only way they're gonna do it is in the context of what's on the table today. Even if that may not be, for whatever reason, uh, satisfactory to the brewery, that is really the only way they're gonna get that kind of assurance. Um, as to a lawsuit, I don't, you know, first of all, with no right, there's no basis for a lawsuit. Second, to the extent they wanna say that they're damaged because we gave, granted a permit, we have toward immunity for granting permits. Um, third, in terms of trying to avoid that kind of silliness and expense related to it, uh.
The what?
Sillyness of a stupid lawsuit and the expense related to it. Um, Chris and I spoke about that earlier today, and we may wanna have a more pointed, uh, conversation with the brewery about that, and some of the risks of filing a stupid lawsuit. So, can you ever stop anyone from filing a stupid lawsuit? I haven't found out how to do that yet. But I have found ways to discourage people from filing stupid lawsuits, and that's what, that's what Chris and I thought might be a valuable endeavor.
I also, so prior to this, that last meeting, you guys said we did have a solution for him. I don't think it was a process of your attention, that this solution was already on the table. I think his, his, it was only the other option of, of the nursing facility and the church parking lot. So, we think of every step to make this work for him, we've had numerous board members talk to him for this whole process. So, it's not just coming to you guys finding the solution, the solution was at the table, or obtained you guys two weeks ago. So, Ryan, how do you get traffic in and out of there? There's no issues with that, you guys? Definitely just. We will have security at temples, and that it will be closed down for the whole, entire day. We'll take the two lots closest to my office, it's gonna be vendor parking and downtown parking, uh, for our local merchants in our businesses. And then we're gonna actually tape off on Friday night that section that we'll be closing off for the brewery for their private event.
So, so, so Mike asked me if I would be there at four o'clock to let people in and out, who from the village would be there? And I said I didn't know, but I mean, if I have to be there, I guess I'll have to be there. I mean, the thing is, is that there's a, there.
You have to hear me there, and SIRs there.
There's a little bit of a trust factor, though, because of what's happened before, right? So.
Anytime he calls with an issue, we, we go to it immediately.
Okay.
You were gonna ask him, if you call Ryan or somebody in your organization at the event, do they respond immediately? We do. Does the SIRs follow up after we walk away? No, they, they.
That's what the issue is, yes, I know.
And that just started this year, prior to that, it was never an issue.
Well, you're gonna have more of it, too, with the seasons.
It's, it's a good problem, fill up the town.
I, I think it, it, you, your value tonight was superb in the.
Remind me.
Uh, it's, it's a whole lot. Everybody else feels like they have ownership of it, and they don't. And, and so that, to me, is, is the most valuable issue involved here.
Jerry, you're, you're kidding tonight. Is the parking the issue?
Yes, it's the biggest issue, yeah, yeah.
If, if there wasn't a festival, they wouldn't be competing with parking, parking, the way, the way I did.
Brother's deal and all the other activities, so in the summer, our lots now fill up pretty quickly. So, on festival, the lot's just as busy as it is as a festival.
And, and they, they're, the valeting the cars and that sort of thing is not gonna work.
Find a spot whenever you do, there's, there's many weekends where they're parking in my lot, because it's overfilled, or they're going to Archer Lot. It's just the nature of what happens now in Long Grove, which is, which is what we want, it's a good problem.
How is, the, the question I have is, how is the bride with this? What, where is the bride? Well, first of all, I, I think it's a horrible PR issue with the bride, and the family, and the wedding party, and the guests, because the jerks in Long Grove messed up my wedding.
When I told Mike two days before he signed that contract, what do you think he should've done? He should've told his client that the festival may be this day.
But that, that's in the past, you can't put that toothpaste back in the tube.
Do I worry about that bride, or do I worry about all the businesses in town that, that need this, that, that fund their businesses?
I, I hear you, I understand. I'm saying that, that there's another layer here. This is, could be a huge black eye on the village, rightly or wrongly, you know, we messed up their wedding. Where are they gonna get another venue at this time for, for their wedding?
If they're able to handle it, but they, it's, it's a reception, the wedding's gonna be at, um, the country club, the.
Reception is, yeah.
It's gonna be here, but they, it's still gonna happen, we're not telling them not to do it, we want them to go and do it.
But how, how is the bride with it, do you know?
I don't know.
Because my, my, I thought last meeting, bride was, didn't, didn't want this, she hadn't planned on being part of the festival. That was the impression I had last time. And I, I'm just, you know, I'm, I'm asking questions.
Yeah, that's not my, that, that would be Mike's responsibility to, trust that, that's, that, our downtown is about the downtown, and about all the businesses that we have in downtown to support the downtown.
But it reflects on, on all of us, rightly or wrongly.
Again, I, I, Mike was aware that the fest dates were this, this week, he chose to still sign a contract.
I understand that, I understand that. The world's already thinks we're idiots for having a bridge that hangs as low as it does, you know, it's like, this is all we need.
So, so, I mean, um, just bringing us, bringing us back here, right? So, I mean, you have a, something before you, you can push it another meeting if you want, I don't know if it'll change the outcome, doesn't sound like it will. Um, you know, uh, it's, it's a compromise, um, you know, somebody wants to make a motion to approve, it's fine, I, I don't, you know, Mike's not here tonight. I guess he didn't plan on the meeting being here tonight, uh, being on a Monday night, 'cause we moved it, so, that's why he's not here, but, uh, he's not, he's, he's not happy with this, he just, it's the trust factor. So, I mean, if, if it happens, it's gonna be, all those things have to be worked out, right? It has to work.
Everyone has my self, I met these events from, from.
I, I missed what you said about SIRs, I know it's an, an absolute.
So we have, we have auxiliary, we have our own team, so that, that, that parking lot is monitored throughout, of course, for the whole event. There is, we have a security guard, and we'll have two people stationed in that spot to, or two, two passes to allow them to come in.
Oh, I see.
So it's, it's gonna be staff gate, that will only allow, uh, members of the wedding party, I mean, that, when those folks start to come in.
The only other thing I hope that doesn't happen is, you know, it goes to the press, so there was, you know, we need to all work together, it's, it's good for our village. So I'm, I'm hoping that doesn't happen either, so.
But what negativity, we, we found a solution to where everything.
It, it, whether you think it's negative or not, you've got a bride who could be flying high.
Absolutely. Um, so, yeah, all the plans are made, and now it's, what, four months away? And, and there's gonna be a frickin' festival for your reception, you know?
Yeah, and there's band, yeah.
There's her band, and.
Oh, oh, yeah, yeah, but I think that this is the only possible resolution. And, and it's our lot.
Well, so if somebody wants to make a, a motion to approve.
I, I have some proposed language on the solid waste issue, if you want to hear that first.
Yes.
Um, I would suggest that in section two, at the end, it includes the following sentence, this is the one that sets the calendar up. "In addition, for twenty twenty-six and thereafter, HDL GBA shall include as part of any future special event permit application, a solid waste management plan that is designed to reduce landfill materials and enhance recycling and related efforts." That, that's, that's part one.
Landscape waste.
And composting.
The name of the company, or is that just the endeavor?
Endeavor.
Land, landfill materials.
Oh, okay, got it.
Not landscape, but landfill.
Recycling and.
Yeah, yeah.
And then.
No, Waste Management, that was what.
I, I didn't mention Waste Management.
They used flood.
My ears turned to Waste Management, so.
Solid waste, management of. Solid waste.
Got it.
Um, and then in the next section, as far as the, uh, lead-up to any of the special events, we have a provision already that they need to meet with Chris to work out any final details, and make any new conditions, or whatever that might be necessary. And so, uh, I've added the following, it, it reads that, um, "Shall meet with the village manager to review, uh, village manager to review the upcoming event, and any special circumstances, conditions, or other considerations that may affect such upcoming event." And then here's the additional language, "including efforts to curtail solid waste." And then here's the additional language, "including efforts to curtail solid waste and encourage recycling during such event." So, at least we're sending the message that that is part of their charge. Right now, it's a matter of considering. Next year's gotta be a specific plan. So, I, I offer that as an amendment to what you have in your packet, and if you wanna have a motion with that, uh, it's, no...
So, so are we not expecting them to do anything this year?
Well, they're gonna have to come up with at least, uh, some conversation as to what they're going to be doing to try to do it. But I, I, I don't know what they're gonna be able to do. Like, I, I think they have one in, what, three weeks?
Yeah, that's not...
So, I'm, you know, I, I, I just don't think that that's gonna be the case. I think there may be the opportunity, and this is gonna be really more on Chris's shoulders than anything else, to, you know, maybe it's nothing for this first event, but they better have something a little more in the second, and, and it can, can then build ultimately to have a plan for the future, but...
So, he can become the enforcer?
Yeah, yeah. He's gonna be, he's gonna make them, because they can't do...
Plus, we've got a different lease holder. We'll have a different...
Yeah, and that may affect some of the...
They used a different one.
They...
We don't know...
They use flood brothers for downtown.
Yeah, that was the whole, remember that whole conversation?
No, sure.
Okay, got it, yeah.
I think, I think there's reasonable accommodation for the wedding. You know, I, I don't know why a bride would be surprised that the venue doesn't have its own parking lot rather than public and street parking. I, I don't, you know, I don't know what that discussion was like or wasn't like. Um, I'll go ahead and move to approve a resolution approving the 2025 HDL GBA special events applications and the 2026 and 2027 scheduled, uh, special event date.
As revised.
As amended or...
As amended, with the additional wording proposed.
Okay. Moved by Trustee Browski, seconded by Trustee Tanucci. That's a roll call.
Could I ask one question?
Yep.
Is, is there a, a process in the change of date?
Um, they would have to come back to the board for that.
Okay, so it would be essentially starting over for that date? If, if they found any error, we could change it.
Yeah, if, if there's something that they need to change along the way, that's something that's gotta come back to the board for consideration. I mean, if you think about it, they're asking to use your property, and it's up to you to say yes or not.
But you mentioned, someone mentioned that we could address this minus this particular festival.
Well, you could, you could ask for that one to be removed if you wanted.
We, we could take Strawberry Fest out of this, and, and that would affect the, you know, some of the exhibits, but it doesn't address the issue. Um, that, that issue's still gonna be hanging out there, so it's kinda kicking the can down the road kind of thing.
Don't we validate, don't we validate the date by saying okay to it, knowing there's a controversy?
Well, if we approve the resolution as it's been moved, the dates with that conflict with the wedding will have been approved. And, uh, but it also will have been approved with the special accommodation to the wedding to have the 90s, the 90s spaces reserved, which otherwise they have no assurance, whatever.
I understand.
Okay, so we have a, a live, uh, motion. It was moved by Trustee Browski, seconded by Trustee Tanucci. That's a roll call.
Trustee Browski?
Aye.
Trustee Tanucci?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
No.
Trustee O'Reilly?
Aye.
President Jacob?
Oh, fun.
Ah!
Fun. Fun.
You can abstain.
Well, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna say yes for sure, that's, um, but I don't wanna, oh my gosh, here we go again.
How many yes votes do we need for that?
You need, you need a four, you need, you need mine, you need four, because we're short a person.
But the...
I, I have the issue, my issue is...
The fourth, the fourth can be an extension.
I, I know. I still have the issue, I have the issue of the fact it's not resolved, and that was our attempt, is to have it resolved before we got here. And of course, now we're back at the same point, thinking we had it resolved. That's my issue.
It's, it's, it's his way or there's no accommodation. That's his only resolve.
You're right. You're right. Even though we may in a week or tomorrow say the same thing we're saying now, at least give him a chance to reply, to discuss.
Absolutely.
Rather, rather than having a, an accomplishment. So, here I go again, I'm gonna change my vote.
Can, can we, can we not decide on this date? What I would love to have is not, I, I'm sorry, but I, I wanted, Brian, I know, I...
I've got contracts, I got, I mean, but this is $200,000. I mean, we, we, we have to get this stuff right now. I mean, we've got this delayed red.
It's been going on for a while, though, so it's, it's your all's decision, so...
This is, this is a whole town.
So, both, so both sides should be super motivated to get this resolved. I hear you. I, I understand. I don't wanna be an issue. I get it.
Then you guys, I, if you guys will then also send a letter to me, that this can, this can affect Strawberry Fest as a whole. This is $200,000 of contracts that are, are being signed, and none of them are even signed. I mean, this is not just a quick look together, there is months and months of planning here. This is not just our date, these are dates getting everyone involved.
It shouldn't, it shouldn't be...
Mike is the prior president, how, he knows the procedure.
I, I get that, and I get, I get his side, and I get the bride's side. I think, I think, I think.
The bride here can be stated, this is about the town. This is not about our brow, this is about our town and what we've done over 30 years in this town.
And it's about possible bad PR, breach of contract, whatever you wanna call it. He said, she said, I don't, I, it doesn't make any difference to me. It's become bigger than it should have been. And I don't, I don't, I, I'm not comfortable validating the date, knowing that there's controversy about this.
And, and, maybe I'm missing something, but I, as I understood, there had been general acceptance of it by both Mike and, uh, the HDL GBA.
Yes.
And then Mike had some misgivings because he wasn't sure how much he could count on it actually happening. Ryan, you're in this business, so you could probably have a sense of what will the cost be, but what if there were a bond for performance of that parking? And if you fail to, the bond defaults to the brewery and, and all that.
I don't think you'd get an underwriter to, to offset that bond.
E- even just, I mean, it doesn't, I mean, I'm guessing, I don't know what the...
$20,000.
Yeah, I mean, $20,000, and it's just to ensure that the parking is available. You can be very specific as to how we write that. Um, but, you know, I mean, I'm guessing that you've done these bonds of something like it through your company before.
You were entitled, I, we say part would write a bond for this.
So, let me ask kind of the board a question, so maybe more directed to Rita or Bobby or Bill. What, what do you think the proposed possible resolution? I mean, you got two people, two organizations vying for the same date. What do you think, if you put these two guys in a room with an arbitrator, what do you think the solution would be? I mean, who, who's gonna move it? I mean, you got a bride who's not gonna move her date, you got a festival that's 50 business owners that aren't gonna move their date. So, what are the possible outcomes of that arbitration?
Half the parking lot reserved.
It, it's a great compromise. It's a great compromise. I don't understand. I mean, to Vic, sort of your point, it's a public parking lot. That bride should have zero expectation that she's got one parking spot.
The other thing that didn't come up was that, um, there will be about 200 people in total, so the question was, will that be enough parking? And will there be any place to overflow anywhere else? There isn't at the vessel. So, 90 might be enough, maybe if everyone goes in pairs, right?
Right.
But if not, then what happens?
The church isn't overflowing.
We would still give them spots there if they wanna park at the auxiliary in Buffalo Road, which shows in the town right to the entrance.
And that's part of what's in there?
Well, this, this wasn't even a conversation. He said he needed 100 spots.
This is in the evening, right? Late afternoon, yeah.
At 4:00 PM, it's 4:00 PM.
Other states today allow the church. Now, we'd have to, you know, clear with them that it's okay, I suppose.
We're, we're working on managing that, helping manage that lot as well.
My issue is, I wanted this to be resolved. I thought we had it, now we're here back at the same point, and that's my...
It was on town bill, what?
Just, even if it's the same thing that's on the table, that they, that everyone's here and they agree to it, that's what I was hoping to do, and I'm surprised that we're, we're still here, right? And maybe we'll never get there. I just, I believe that we can get there, right? I'm, I'm hearing all the right stuff.
I don't believe we should allow one business owner to hold the entire festival, the Business Association and Village Hostage. A proposal was made, a proposal was accepted, oops, I changed my mind last minute, we're moving forward. Maybe if we accept the date, that'll give this business owner some incentives to say, okay, fine, I'll do it. Because if we keep kicking the can down the road, we're giving him the idea in his head that, oh, I'm winning. I can bully these people, I can get my way.
It wasn't on the agenda for the last meeting, this, we got here for the first time, right? We were trying to get an agreement in place before we put it there. We thought we had one, and lo and behold, find out we don't.
And I was worried not voting last time because we didn't have an agreement. We came into this meeting, as far as we all knew, with an agreement. Mike pulled the agreement at the last second. You know, he's, he's not operating in good faith. We should just approve the dates, move forward, agreement's the agreement. If he doesn't like it, fine.
Yeah.
Whatever you wanna do.
Did, the, the wed, the wedding is at the Country Club?
Well, I, that's the information I don't have, but you, you have it, yeah.
Reception is at the brewery.
At the brewery, yeah.
So, why not, why not have a shuttle service? They leave their, they leave their cars at the Country Club, and then you have, you know, two vans or three vans going back and forth for, what, an hour each way, each time?
I think it's easier just to, you stump a lot to give them a guarantee that they have that a lot.
But, but somebody said 90 spaces may not be enough.
I did, yeah. Well, Mike said that, so he was worried, yeah.
But there, there is no guarantee that he would get 90 spaces on any, any, any weekend event.
Probably wouldn't, actually.
Because if Brothers Steel has an activity over the weekend, that could be half the lot. If Mike, when season has a wedding, that could be half the lot. At any point, there's no guarantee. Mike has eight spots that he owns that he can have guaranteed. Otherwise, there's no guarantee. Now, there is some other caveat that we don't know yet, so Brothers Steel has also offered their back lot. Again, depending on construction where they're at, if, if they're able to, they'll grant access for him to have that grass lot behind the van studio as well. I can't say that's gonna be in this, uh, agenda today because we don't know where that's at. If we move closer, it potentially could be an option, if available.
If, and if it doesn't rain, it's not pouring.
Well, if it rains, that's a different story. If it rains, they could find any lot in town, because guess what? We're gonna be dead in town. So, it's, it's, weather's our factor.
So, I, I, okay, so Ryan, I appreciate all you do, so don't ever take me acting this way wrong. I just have an issue without having this resolved, abstaining or saying yes. So, I'm, I don't know if we're gonna get over the goal line here on that one festival, 'cause I, I still think, you, maybe you're close, maybe it's that close. I don't know, you know? So, I guess I have to, either if no one changes their position, or I don't know, did you change your position?
I don't know too well right now.
Okay. I mean, there's, I, I, my preference would be to, to pull the one about...
So, what, what you, what do you, what do you, wanna, do you wanna kick this whole thing down the can, or just...
Just another two weeks.
Or...
Just, just this event, just this event, so...
It doesn't have to be two weeks. If an agreement can be made in 24 hours, you've got 24 hours. It doesn't have to take two weeks.
But we don't approve it tonight, we can't approve it before we...
Okay, so then we, we add, we add one other provision to your point.
This is about stamp approval.
So, we, so hold on a second, we'll add another provision. I don't know how we do this, and Vic, you can tell me wrong, but I, I abstain or say yes, but I say yes subject to the fact that, that you do, you guys do have to agree to this thing. You gotta come up with a solution that works.
I would.
What can we agree to, Bill? I mean, what, where else is there agreement? We're giving, there, you've got half the lot. What, what else can we do?
I don't know. I mean, there, but sit down and have it agreed to.
Mike, Mike will not sit down with me.
The dates aren't gonna change.
So, we can, the dates are fine, but we can...
Have you talked directly with, with Mike?
I did, tonight. Oh, Chris did, too, but not tonight.
Talked to him a lot.
Yes.
Okay, so, so, what if he...
I, I had him agree to the plans that were in the packet that you saw tonight with the parking lot. We were good with that last week. Uh, we finally broke through over the phone after a conversation, 'cause that was his main concern, was parking. And having the downtown guarantee that the lots were gonna be available to him, and not, at the last minute, you know, fail to enforce the lot, and it gets filled up, and the wedding guest not able to attend.
Fine, what else can we do? What else can they do?
If it's a trust issue, and I assume they're not trusting him, are we guaranteeing the 90s, are we the village?
It is in our plan, and the resolution requires the downtown to provide those spots, and if they don't, then they can be fined or future events can be...
Is there a way to change that, or, so that we are, so if, if Phil, Phil has to be out there?
On your shirt on?
I got, I'm done with it.
But then it's gonna make me come through. I used my little badge that they gave me, right?
There you go.
Good campaigning event, Bill.
You can hand out...
That's too late.
That's too late, yes.
This is a large event, we have a very large team on site. They will be dead directing this to the on park.
But hold on a second, I want Bobby to finish his talk.
Okay, so, so I'm not saying that anything isn't gonna work. If, if, if he's not trusting that, that, that it's going to be enforced, can we strengthen that in some way?
Vic? Um, let me suggest this, um...
He's already writing.
Okay.
Uh, we, we have a paragraph in the resolution currently that memorializes what we've identified as the special Strawberry Fest plans, that's the parking stuff. If we add, because we have this consultation process built in already, "in addition, HDL G and the village manager shall confer with Buffalo Creek Brewery to develop assurances regarding implementation of the special Strawberry Fest plans." And that is a means by which there will be outreach to Mike Marr, and if he has some ideas as to what will give him that extra special comfort to let him know that he'll to let him know that he'll have the spaces that are, that are provided for, then that's something that will be a built-in condition as part of Strawberry Fest.
We've been doing that with our, our board. Our board, they, they, and our board has had multiple meetings, both in person and over the phone. I think, Chris, you've got to see, seen on an email as well. Uh, so we've been, we've been taking this action with everyone, just not myself. Mike and I do not see eye to eye after the SSA debacle that occurred with the change of.
So it's kinda up to you.
It's up to me. Your, your vote's yes. Okay, um.
I, I mean, if you want to request that the motion and second be amended to have this additional language.
I do.
Um, if they accept it, then we can go around the horn with another vote and see where we end up.
Okay, I would like that.
Chris?
I'm happy to amend the motion to refresh the wording.
Okay.
Second.
Okay.
I, I do have a, kinda another, kinda corollary to maybe justifying or positioning or guaranteeing. Can we station our sheriff in that parking lot for a couple hours? Or put a special sheriff assignment at that location just to make sure that we have the enforcement we can ask?
We, we certainly can. I mean, they're our sheriff, and I think that under the terms that you guys actually pay for them, um, but, but they will be.
Well, we've got their detail.
Well, no, but I mean, I think that when we have a special detail for their event, even though the detail is under our control, it's at their nickel. That's, I, I believe that's how we have operated that. And we have the ability to deploy those who are under the village's aegis accordingly. And I think that might be part of what, that, that's, you know, my head, that's kind of what would be thinking. Okay, Mike, what do you need to make sure that it's gonna work? And if that's what it is, then that's what it will be. You know, I, I think that if we have this language, it affords Chris, you know, some additional ability to, to make that kind of accommodation. I, I, you know, frankly, from what I've seen, I don't think that there's much doubt that the HDLGBA can pull it off. And so it's just a matter of making sure Mike Marr feels that way.
Tonight, we, there is, we have ninety certs over the course of Saturday, Sunday. Pulling off a, uh, 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 county police officer, we can only get four volunteers at any given time. I think it would be a bad use of our safety protocol. Call the volunteers, it's four. Going off the city area parking lot when I've got three dedicated cert at that spot. All day, as well as our own team, I think would be a bad use of us and, and the village's resource. Because again, they're life safety, they are carrying guns, they're there for the safety of the whole event. Versus cert who handles parking, that is their role in traffic control. So I think using cert or our auxiliary is the way to go, not a, or a police officer.
I, I don't disagree with you, but that's not what is suggested as far as the additional language. That's a to be determined, and I think that you're probably right that having somebody else, it doesn't have to be somebody with a gun and a badge, it could be somebody with a whistle and a, you know.
They still have gadgets, they just don't need guns.
We don't need no thinking budget. Um, it could be somebody with a whistle and a, you know, and a stop sign or whatever. But I think that having some kind of dedicated personnel may be the thing that gives the assurance. I don't think we need to decide that tonight. I think what we need to do is to make sure we incorporate that into the process and give Chris the authority to, to make that happen. And, you know, there might, there, I think there still need to be some communications to Mike about the, uh, his expectations regarding the use of the lot, just as a general matter. Um, but if we wanna try to move this forward and still make sure that we are affording Mike some further opportunity to have conversation about it, then this might be the way to do it. We're, we're plugging him into the resolution.
And, and could the, could the guests park between, in the lane, in the lane, or is that a fire lane and they can't park in there?
I don't know offhand. That's something that can be, that's something that can be reviewed as part of, as part of that.
You're blocking off the two rows for the, the brewery. Can't you just not park cars like perpendicular to the parking spots?
If you have fire safety, fire safety.
So you need that that way open?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, you know, again, something that can be reviewed with the fire department. Yeah, and it may be something that can be reviewed with the fire department and the sheriff's office as well. I, I, you know, I don't think that we need to make all of those decisions now. I think by ensuring the ninety spaces and providing for some additional capability to further tweak this in a way that will give some comfort to Mike Marr, um, may be all that we can do at this point. Um, but it, that would then be the motion, if I understand with the three changes.
Sure.
You already did the, the first two. We just added the third one. So now we would need a motion, or we need a vote on that. Go ahead, you might.
Go ahead, Adam, yeah.
Trustee Borowski?
Aye.
Trustee Newt Chief?
Aye.
Trustee O'Connor?
Aye.
Trustee O'Reilly?
That was, that was, uh, yes? Oh, okay, motion carried. I didn't even have to vote. But I feel better about it. Thank you. I do. I do feel better about it.
Well, still say it would've, would've been a problem.
So, um, I'm, I'm, I, I guess I'll be working there at four o'clock, so.
I'll give you, we'll give you a vest.
Can I have a vest? All right, motion carried. Thank you very much. Thanks. All right, so hopefully this next one's a lot easier.
I'll tee it up when you're.
Uh, yeah, so discussions, generation of an ordinance, amending the Long Grove Commons, PUD regarding signage.
And this is, incidentally, this is not an ordinance, this is really a discussion that will be the basis for preparing an ordinance.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah.
That was actually changed in the final version of the agenda, but it didn't get into the package.
Okay, down, okay.
Yes, sorry.
So we're not taking a vote tonight?
No, this is just to get feedback.
Okay. You waited all this time?
Yeah. So Karen and I met with the Architectural Commission to review Sorrel's, and I'll pass it over to Karen in a second here. Um, met, they, they had a meeting to discuss the signage for Sorrel. And one of the, um, items that came up was the allowance of the signage in the Long Grove Commons and it being restrictive for some of the businesses. Um, and if you picture Sorrel, their front door kind of faces away from twenty-two. So they can only have one sign per the code right now. And what we're looking to do, and Dunkin' Donuts has a similar issue, you'll see the big wavy banners right now. Um, we've done such a good job having the trees grow there that it completely blocks off all visibility. So I can let Karen put together a great report here. I can let her kinda take over and fill in the details.
And, uh, if there is a PowerPoint, just for, more for the audio, 'cause everything's in your packet, but if you want to. It'll be.
No, it's not. Are those trees, are they valuable trees or are they probably crack rock?
They were planted as part of the landscaping plan for the development.
And all that, underbrush, that you can't see, that's all.
That was not really part of the plan.
Why don't they just load the freaking trees?
I'm, I'm not sure what they were thinking.
Okay, that's true. We were thinking.
The whole thing.
We were thinking.
There are some improvements that could be made along those lines. But it's not the only issue. And, uh, when I first started this summer, there were two applications for, for signs that came in, uh, this summer, this summer, that I was unable to approve, uh, because they were, you know, compliant with our sign codes. And Long Grove Commons does, for the most part, follow the sign code of the village. It has some, some, uh, minor amendments that have, that have occurred. It's the D, uh, allowing for some illuminated signs and some, uh, on-site directional signs.
So the illuminated signs that's in this proposal, it just says that the sign's not illuminated except for the copy. How does that work? Like, is, is my interpretation of that correct? You just?
Yeah, that's already.
The letters themselves are lit up with the background of the sign, isn't it?
Yeah, that's already part of the code. That's already, as I.
It's in the one fourteen folder.
You don't have a big.
Well, that's why I didn't see it.
You know, rectangle of, of light. It, you see what you need to see, which is what's written on the sign. All right, so if that doesn't come up, it's.
No, no, it was in the wrong folder. It's now where it's supposed to be. Just come, just give it a second, it's gonna come.
And then the, the height proposal or maximum of eight feet, where does that come from? Like, who picked eight feet?
Well, that's gonna be, that's a change that we've made since we wrote the report. We wanna propose something different. We wanna recommend five feet.
Oh, thank you.
Because the, the, it originally came from kind of typical signage regulations in the region.
Oh, it's not PowerPoint?
You know, you have to look at other communities and.
It's not?
Uh.
Uh, yeah, it should be a PowerPoint.
And, and we, we felt that that was a little too large for, for Long Grove. Anyway, um.
Hold on.
I think it would depend on the height of the, right away.
So you saw in, in the report.
Do you want the sign to be a little bit taller so people can be a comment by?
That, uh, I felt when reviewing these, these sign applications, that it really was hindering the success of the businesses. Um, especially, you know, uh, when we looked at Sorrel wanting to have a sign over their front door. Well, that's really not very visible at all for twenty-two and hardly visible from, uh, from Old McHenry. Similarly, um, Dunkin'.
Their computer flash, so it's good.
Um, yeah. Okay, okay, great. These, um, no, the, oh, for Dunkin'.
Oh, sorry.
Um, he, we're, you're only allowed to have one, uh, one sign, uh, well, you, you, you're limited to your total, cumulative total, um, I think it's thirty square feet for, for Dunkin'. And he, he was already at, he's got two wall signs. Uh, okay, let me start that. Let me start where I was. Here's the layout of Long Grove Commons. The building on the right side along Old McHenry. The once of Dunkin' Donuts has not been built.
Oh, this one, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. It's a, it's a vacant lot. It's for sale. And it would be nice to have that, uh, developed at some point. Um, you can go to the next slide. Let me get my steering stick. Some of the, um, this list of the businesses that are in, uh, the development. Some of the issues include landscaping, which we have some pictures of, but also limited access points. The two triangles are right in, right out. And the two sort of cross shapes are full, you know, access points. You can turn left into them, um, or turn left out of there. So if you're coming eastward along twenty-two, you know, and you don't see business signs from twenty-two for, for Dunkin' and for Sorrel and all the other businesses in, in the building with Sorrel, you're gonna have to come all the way around, um, in order to get back into the development. And that's, that, that hinders things, you know. Sometimes some of their customers might say, oh, forget it, I'm gonna go somewhere else. And, um, so that's, that's an issue that, you know, is, it's probably not going.
Well, I stopped to take pictures of the Jays camp the other day, um, and to see the vandalism there. And as I stopped there, two cars made an illegal left turn into the parking lot.
I bet that happens all the time, yeah.
It, it's a terrible, terrible access in that, in that whole shopping center. It's the dumbest setup I've ever seen.
There is potential really for an access point probably in between on the south side.
Between the full access and the.
Oh, here's.
Right in, right out, yeah, right around there. Um, but, you know, that would require, uh.
Would never get approved.
Well, well, when you, when you turn in off of twenty-two and you immediately have to turn left on, onto a, an access point.
Yeah. It's a tough setup, um, but that's where, you know, we're probably not gonna.
Are there any, has, has anybody considered any solutions to the layout? Um, is there, I don't know.
They could seek approval for an additional access point on twenty-two, but it's probably too close to the existing one.
I doubt.
It would be really tough to get approved. Um, so this is, you know, a, kind of, kind of a workaround in some ways. Um, so, yes, landscaping is, is, uh, quite, quite lush. And, um, the, the, the parcels are individually owned. Um, there are some common areas, but the landscaping on this corner, especially, or, or except for the landscaping around the multi-tenant sign here, is responsibility of the parcel owner, Dunkin' Donuts. It's not the same as the proprietor in this case. There is a, um, an, you know, an association that manages some of the common areas, like the signage.
That, that, from, from my perspective, that, that needs figuring out, that sign.
Yeah, and I, I have talked to the, uh, to the manager of the association about, you know, that, that issue and he said that he's going to, you know, make that, make it more visible. But it doesn't solve, it doesn't solve all these business problems. So, um, obviously also this, you know, this development we've laid out so that there are multiple frontages. Um, and for a business to have to decide, do I wanna a sign over my door? Or do I wanna sign as visible from this arterial or that arterial? Is, is really hurting. It's really hurtful for the business. And it's an unusual sign code provision on top of that. You know, if you can't see more than one of them at a given time, it's not really contributing to, you know, sign, sign clutter, if you will. Um, so, so Sorrel came, came to us. I'll take that, um, that, that issue first. Sorrel came to us wanting, um, signs, a, a, a sign on their south facade facing twenty-two. On their east facade, which would be somewhat visible from Old McHenry. Yeah, you can see it above the, um, sort of the drive-through projection, which they're not really using the drive-through there right now, but they might in the future. And also one on the north facade.
Do you have pictures of that too? No?
Uh, you can't see it from the road.
Uh, there's, uh, I think there's one, uh, by, uh, along.
The, the north.
It's in your packet.
Is, is where the door is.
Yeah, okay. Exactly.
Oh, here's the, is that the front there?
No.
Oh, no.
There's one, um, it's, it's actually on, I think, slide eleven. Uh, yeah, okay, so, so the north facade is on the right, because you're on the right.
Right here.
And they've got temporary signs up there right now, um, which I think are supposed to be up for either thirty or sixty days and that.
But who's, but who's counting?
Right, we're, we're.
We're not, we're not, we're not.
We're doing that right now so we can just, this issue resolve. Um, so we, we felt, and the Architectural Commission also felt that it was important to have, for businesses to have visibility. Why be along an arterial if people can't see you? And, you know, and, and I know Dunkin' Donuts has had, um, you know, problems getting their drive-through seen and noticed and, you know, and they've, they've had some, uh, business problems actually since the, uh, since the pandemic. Um, so.
Keep going or no, or?
Uh, yeah, let's, where are we at? We're on eleven?
I'm messing you up?
So, so, uh, yeah, let's go to the next slide, twelve. Uh, the next one?
Okay.
I think, yeah. Um. So that, that's kind of a, um, closer in view of Dunkin' and it's really quite surrounded by, by landscaping. I, I could've showed, um, I should've included the landscaping plan from when the PUD was first adopted. And it just, it shows very, very future-y things, that they've really grown up. I don't know if it's, you know, the type of tree that they decided to use or, or what, but, uh, it's much more than was, was envisioned. Um, then there's a couple more views of, of Dunkin', if you wanna go to the next. That's from Old McHenry. You can't see that there's a drive-through. And then the next one is for Route twenty-two. I think you can't see it. Um, so they, they put in a request for two forty-square-foot monument signs. Oh, sorry, thirty-two square foot monument signs. Be one on, on Old McHenry and one on Route twenty-two. I had to say no because they were over their thirty-foot allocation, cumulative allocation of signs, which is for a business between, uh, I think, one thousand and three thousand and one square feet. It's a, it's a big range. Um, so, uh, the, these are our recommendations. I think I can kind of jump straight to that. If you have more questions about the, the ground signs, I do have pictures of, a lot of pictures of ground signs that I could show you. Let's go to twenty-five. Yeah, you can, you can flip to these. These are just, you know, I looked at a lot of ground signs, there's some other ones. All right, uh, so, yeah, so this is our, our current signage allowed cumulative total, um, is actually very similar to the cumulative total, uh, allowed in B1. And in B1, you know, a lot of people are either moving slowly, hopefully going twenty-five or thirty on, on the roadway or they, they might be pedestrians, but they're not going forty-five or fifty, which, you know.
Okay.
Which they are, you know, which isn't.
And LA Green.
But that, that's, you know, those are the speed limits, um, along, on, on, uh, Old McHenry and on twenty-two adjacent to Long Grove Commons. Um, for example, a one thousand to three thousand foot, uh, square foot business in, uh, in B2 is allowed thirty square feet of signage if it has arterial access. In, uh, in B1, the same size business, it's allowed twenty-six square feet of signage. And there's been a lot of studies of, you know, what, how fast are you going and what can you see on, you know, on different signs of different sizes, whether they're parallel, perpendicular to the roadway, the whole science to it. And it's really quite impossible to see, um, you know, there's some of the Long Grove Commons signs when you're driving by, even if they are on the right side. So, um, I'll, I'll jump to the recommendations and then I'll let, let everyone just ask questions, um, on, on that. Um, and this, this is what we discussed in, more conceptually with the Architectural Commission, but I wanna point out that all of the signs for, you know, for anywhere really would have to still go through the Architectural Commission to make sure that they are compatible with the architecture, that they're of a, a scale that makes sense for the development, um, and, you know, the, the other, um, standards that are in their regular review of signs. Um, I, um, I am suggesting one, uh, 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 one square foot of sign space area per one linear foot of tenant frontage. And that's not the frontage of the lot, that's the frontage of the building. Um, the, the tenant space in the building. This keeps, um, the sign size kind of commensurate or in scale with, with the tenant space. And, and, and with the, and with the building as well. And, and with the, and with the building as well. So, you know, if, if the, if one side of the, for example, uh, Sorrel, I think their north frontage is forty, you know, south frontage is forty, that, that fits, well, forty square feet is what they had on the, on their temporary signs. But, um, so if you, if you wanted to flip back to that was.
Well, let you keep going and then if, if the board wants to go back, we'll go back.
All right, sounds good. Um, I, I did, you know, a lot of mockups of signs on the building and, um, and the wall sign for, for the, you set to be, um, commensurate with the size of the building, the business facade and also the building architecture. So on the east side where they have the bump out towards drive-through, you know, that's a seventy-six foot, I think, business frontage, but the Architectural Commission suggested, and I agree, that the sign, the sign size would go by one square foot for one linear foot of that projection, so, so it would look, you know, like it fits in with the, with the building architecture. That, that is my recommendation on, on wall signs and they would have, they would be allowed one per frontage. Some of them already have that out there, I have found no, really no records of how everyone got their, got the signage that they got. Um, but there, but I had a whole spreadsheet of what's there, what are their, what, you know, tenant frontages, what, what are they currently allowed, and there's no rhyme or reason to it. So I think getting some standards in place will, will be very helpful. Regarding the, uh, the, the drive-through ground sign, which it, it just, it happens to say drive-through, but it's a, a ground sign. Um, this would, uh, number two would allow one ground monument sign per arterial street frontage, uh, for, for businesses that have a drive-through. Um, it's pretty typical.
Again, you're predicated, um, if you have a drive-through, these are the walls.
Yes, right, so, um, a, a, a pretty typical sign, like if you, if you drive around and you see all these, you know, drive-through signs, little ground signs, forty, forty square feet is pretty typical. Thirty-two square feet is also pretty typical. Um, I, I think that the Architectural Commission and is gonna support, and I would recommend something a little bit smaller for, for Long Grove Commons, um, because they're, they're still gonna be able to be seen, um, and read. They're, you know, they're just not gonna be like highway size, you know, um, twenty, twenty-four square feet is a little bit smaller than the thirty-two, we can look at that again, that they requested. Um, they also requested an, originally an eight-foot maximum sign height and that would include the base of the sign. Um, and I, I feel like that is, is also a little, a little bit taller than it needs to be. There are provisions in the sign code that talk about, um, you know, that they, that signage should be, be low, should be horizontally oriented and, what, what's the term that we use in here? Um, just basically have a low profile for ground signs and that's generally what you see in town. I hesitated to go, um, with a, a six-foot maximum height instead of eight, only because sometimes the roadway is higher than, than the base, than the sign location. And then it's really hard to see, if you've got like, you know, a six-foot sign and the roadway is four foot higher than the, the site, it's gonna be really difficult to see. We've got a good example of that at CBS on eighty-three and they have, uh, a higher base to compensate for that. But, um, if we put provision, and other communities do this, that, that they can measure the, the, uh, the height from the, the elevation of the adjacent roadway, if it is higher, um, then I think six foot is, is totally adequate. You know, if it, the, um, six foot might not be adequate if the elevation was higher on the roadway and it had to be measured from the sign location, but if you can measure it from the adjacent roadway, then, um, that, that kind of takes care of that problem. Um, the other provision I wanted to put in there is, um, is for landscaping of the base. When we look at the Dunkin' sign again, you'll see that it's just very stark and it's got like a metal base that makes the sign look more, um, you know.
Industrial scale.
Industrial, and it makes it appear a lot larger than it is. Um, so I, um, I thought that a landscaping provision, uh, you know, something that fits in with the, with the landscaping of the development, not so overgrown, but, uh, you know, and something with year-round interest, color, materials, you know, native grasses, whatever, um, whatever we want, could be included and, and, um, really soften the base of those signs. Um, internally illuminated signs are allowed in Long Grove Commons, um, but, but like the other internally illuminated signs in town, we would want, uh, the, the copy, the sign copy to be illuminated, so you can read it at night, but if it doesn't look like a giant, uh, lit rectangle, you know, you'd be able to read it. And that, that really makes signs a lot more appealing, a lot more aesthetically, uh, you know, less intrusive. So, um, I don't know if you want to look at the, the size of the Sorrel signs, the forty square feet that they have up there now would be the same size, but I think they're, would be looking at a different configuration, um, because they wanna have, um, the circle with the logo, um, with the three daughters, that is so beautiful, and then the Sorrel, um, in, in like a script, illuminated script below it and, uh, so, uh, and then the Dunkin' sign would be somewhat smaller than is depicted. These are on the last page of your, page of your, of your packet, if you wanna look at them, or they're also. Oh, no, Sorrel's on eleven.
Yeah, I don't know where page number I'm on, but, uh.
Oh.
Oh, thirteen, here's a, here's eleven.
Yeah.
Come on right up.
Okay.
Here we go.
So. Oh, this, okay, that's ten. So these are the, uh, these are the.
Oh, eleven was right here, uh.
Yeah.
That one?
Yeah, so this is what, what they proposed, it would be, it would be somewhat smaller than this because, um, because it'd be forty square feet. Forty square feet in a rectangular form looks like. Slide ten, if you wanna go back up to ten, sorry. Um, that's forty square feet, that's sort of ten by four, um, it'll be more. Visible than this, because they'll be illuminated. But it's not gonna be quite this large, but I think this, I think this is around seventy-six square feet, seventy-two. Depending on how it's measured, and I have a question for Vic on that. It needs to be one continuous perimeter, if it can be a tri, triangle, then it can be almost as big. If there has to be a rectangle, then it's gotta be. Anyway, that's a whole nother topic.
Technically now Dunkin's allowed two signs.
Technically, they are allowed one wall sign.
No, no, the, the ground sign.
Um, they are allowed one ground sign, but they don't have the cumulative square footage. They don't have the square footage allowance left over within their cumulative limit of thirty.
They put one on the building, they can't put one on the ground, is what you're saying?
If they put one on the.
They put it smaller.
It would have to be smaller.
Smaller, okay.
They're already at thirty square feet of signage.
I, I don't, I don't, I'm not worried about the, the wall sign right now.
Yeah.
I am worried about the ground sign. Are they, when to be permitted to have two ground signs?
One on, one on, uh, twenty-two and one on Old McHenry.
Okay, but time out, there was a drive-through component to that, right?
It's, yes, the gra, the ground signs would be allowed for businesses with a drive-through, one on each arterial.
And this is a pro, a proposed recommendation, this is not what the code is currently.
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, the, the current approval is a quantum of signs, they can have one ground sign and one wall sign, but the thirty square feet is the big limitation, so it's gonna have to either be a very small wall sign or a very small ground sign, or one's gonna be big and the other one's gonna be minuscule. So, that, that is a constraint, I think in part that, that Karen is identifying, especially given some of the visibility challenges with the location, the road, the nature of the roadways and some of the landscaping.
My concern is the two grounds.
So Karen, what, what do you do if your, what if you do if your business had a drive-through? You're still kinda stuck to the new square footage and the wall sign?
They can have, well, they, they'll, they would be allowed to have, um, more square footage than they currently.
Right.
And they can have one wall sign per.
Frontage.
Elevation.
Per elevation.
Per, yeah, per frontage.
Okay.
Yeah, um, it, it doesn't allow, Long Grove Commons doesn't allow for ground signs for all the individual businesses because they've got the multi-tenant sign on the corner.
Thank you.
Which could use to be refreshed too.
Yeah.
What you talked about.
It's a horrible sign.
And there's been some interest in an additional multi-tenant sign, like maybe, you know, north of the one on the corner. West end of development, maybe.
At the west end of development.
Apparently they're ridiculously expensive, the manager of Long Grove Commons told me it was about a hundred thousand dollars. I'm not sure.
Because it's a brick pile, that's, that's why.
Yeah. Well, rebuild the one that's there and, and, and put something a little brighter and readable on it, but that's, I'd say.
Just to give some perspective, this is now roughly twenty years old. I mean, you know, this was at the time, without any landscaping, when it first went up, I mean, it was a very prominent, uh, sign.
And it was a bank.
Yeah, and, and I think after twenty years and the growth and the, just the age, it's, uh, kinda faded into the.
Into the days.
Yeah.
Is, is there, is there, um, any objection to clearing out the landscaping, which, still free to say, but, um, it, it's, it's a necessity.
Um, I haven't heard any objection to it, it's just a matter of whether the association wants to, you know, agrees to.
Well, and, and whether the village does, I, I mean.
Right, right, that, that's.
Yeah, I, I, I mean.
They have to get a permit, a pre-removal permit.
Yeah, one, one of the things that Chris and I talked about, I mean, I, I, this was one of the first projects that I worked on when I started serving, uh, the village and there was a decided desire to, uh, to maintain the landscape look of all of this property, because this, this was a heavily wooded property at the time. And so that was a real goal and at the time it served the, the purposes of everyone and it sounded great. Um, but landscape grows and it sometimes affects the, the long-term impact. And I, we had a similar development for another client that was cut out of a forest and everyone thought, and it won all sorts of awards and fifteen years into it, you lost sight of the development, you couldn't find it. And so it's had to be culled, notwithstanding the original vision that everyone had for it and, and this might require a little refreshment. And I think that the, the calling of the landscaping, for saying that, but the, you know, the, the calling of the landscaping is actually something that we might have to think about seriously.
Long Grove is home to help.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, you know, it, it, it's somewhat counterintuitive for the village to be talking about that, but, you know, for the viability of the development, that might be something that we need to do, but it will need to do, I think, with a little more thoughtfulness than, let's just cut down a bunch of trees.
Yeah.
And, and I think that's part of the challenge and, and that might be an invitation that can be presented to them to come back to the, to the village, uh, and so it can be reviewed appropriately by our forester and, and Karen and whomever else needs to, to look at it. Um, but I think that that door might be, it might be worthwhile to say that that door's not slam shut.
I'd like to be more proactive and say that, that's welcome, that, that conversation. I mean, that, that's just gotta be.
Yeah, that's, that's not what it looked like twenty years ago, it's sure what it looks like today.
Okay, so what do we, what do we need to do tonight to advance this?
Well, I think that if you are generally in favor of the recommendations that, uh, that Karen has in the PowerPoint, um, communicating that as your consensus will be what we need to do to draft the ordinance. As part of the ordinance, we can also, because we don't have the landscaping plan, we can also state that, uh, you know, that the landscaping, uh, may be reviewed in the context of a specific plan. I, I don't wanna give anyone carte blanche on that, but I think we definitely wanna serve up the invitation.
Can we, um, recommend that the signage, the sign, the land, the ground signs that are proposed are uniform between the owners? Or can the Architectural Committee guarantee that they're sort of same, same bases or?
We, we, you know, obviously the copy's gonna differ.
Yeah, yeah.
But in terms of the nature of the ground sign, we can say that the development has to have a uniform, uh, size and dimension, uh, and then they have to figure it out from there.
Did you mean also like the architecture of the base or the monuments itself?
I don't think so, I don't, I think you want the bases to kinda look the same, you want them all to be kinda uniform, with the exception of the copy and the logos and that kinda thing.
Can I ask another dumb question though, that, that yours is not dumb, mine's dumb though. Um, the question is.
I've got six kids.
Sounds good.
Whatever it takes. If somebody out there watching you at strawberry stuff.
It's shoe leather, oh my gosh. Um, how many bases could you end up out there if, if this is done wrong, right?
Who's out there?
Is that your point?
Yeah, that's my point.
But I, my question was dumb, yours was smart, so sorry.
No, I was just saying.
Yeah.
I'm only looking at, at two, except that in the future Sorrel might, uh, might have utilized, utilized their drive-through and then they would have the ability to have one on twenty-two and one sign on twenty-two and one sign on Old McHenry.
Well, one of the things we could also do, if we're concerned about the blight of multiple ground signs.
Yeah.
One of the things we can think about is that we could have a, a minimum separation between any ground signs. So at least they will be spaced. Um, there's, you know, actually quite a bit of frontage along twenty-two and not quite as much on Old McHenry, but my guess is that you could have easily on twenty-two, three ground signs without, without being assaulted by the signs.
But if the other building develops on the vacant lot, and I'm that developer, I'm putting a board to go in and calling it a driveway and putting signs up, right?
Well, they need to get a special approval for the, uh, for the drive-through, they can't just, they can't just do that.
You know, you know.
Yeah, no, no, I, yeah.
Process and call it a drive-through, right? So now we're up to six signs, because now you got, at least, what if you do a drive-through on each side of that building? Now you're up to.
Well, if they come in, if they come in for the drive-throughs, we can also say, yeah, you can have the drive-throughs, but you don't get the extra ground signs, I mean, that's, that'll be up to us.
I'm sure Raleigh will remember that detail in twenty years, right?
But they won't remember the detail, but you'll be able to say, gosh, that's a lot of ground signs. And, and that would be the condition for the, for the, for the drive-through.
Okay, so can they be combined, can the ground sign be combined or is, is there a way the ground sign could?
Well, I suppose, I mean, the, the problem is, is that if you have, say, a V-shaped sign, so you have one on each side, except one is not gonna be visible from one of the directions.
Okay.
Usually you wanna have, I presume on both of these, you're looking for a perpendicular to the roadway sign that has the messaging on both sides.
Okay, and they can't be stacked or it can't be Dunkin' Donuts.
Definitely could, but they probably, we would probably both, Sorrel and Dunkin', if they both had them, probably both want the, uh, twenty-two, uh, east of that right in, right out.
Could you do what we're doing with the monument signs that you, we're trying to get through this accounting right now, where you do one sign that has just two sides, that has business one, business two, and gives you flexibility? Because you're gonna wanna have your entrance points into there and you can be both other sided.
Well, I mean, the, the point that Karen raised earlier about putting additional monument signs or, you know, uh, the multi-tenant monument signs at the two full interchanges at the north end of McHenry. at the north end of McHenry, and at the west end of twenty-two, probably makes the most sense. It's just that it's a more costly undertaking.
Are, are there any, um, restrictions that I-GOT would have, and, and what is the right-of-way? How much, how much land is there between?
Um, I don't, I don't know the details from where the right-of-way- Generally, the, the monument sign would have to be five or six feet inside the property line, and, and, uh, you know, I-GOT does have restrictions from their, from their right-of-way, and it also can't conflict with traffic, you know, safety signs and all that.
I think it's probably a little more complicated, a little more curious, that suddenly, I'm thinking of-
Well, those are already part of the sign code, that, um, you know, that it has to be, any, any sign that, uh, you know, that's near the right-of-way has to be-
We've got, uh-
We have setbacks already, already incorporated into our code.
Yeah.
Well, so, I mean, um, just generally speaking, I support the signs for Sorrel, and also better signs for Dunkin' Donuts, because it'll get rid of all those, what do you call those, flag signings and stuff, too?
Illegal, illegal signage.
Illegal signage, right? And, um-
Is that how we call it?
Illegal, what?
Yeah, they're against the sign code.
Yeah, they're, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I guess, yeah, yeah.
We'll have to check.
Yes, that's, that's-
It'll take a while to check.
So, but, I mean, so we need to do something, so, I mean, is there, I mean, how do we, like, tonight, this is the first look at it, I mean, is it something?
Well, you know, we, we, we can also take this in multiple bites. We can approve the wall signs, certainly that would be a good first step. With respect to the ground signs, it's clear that there's still some thinking that might be worthwhile, uh, doing in terms of what might be the options, what might be the total number, if there are other locations, if there might be more of the multi-tenant signs, uh, you know, uh, at the two far entrances, and, and there are other things that, that might be available in that context, too. Maybe we can break this up into parts, not say no to anything on the ground signs, but let's have more thinking on that, to get the building signs done for the next meeting.
Well, you're good.
Um, so Duncan, uh-
It's the new year.
What'd you say?
The Duncan proprietor, uh, applied for these in the, the summer, in the last summer, and he, he, I, I feel like he really needs, you know, some, some drive, some signs that show that he's there, has a drive-through, he's, he's really in a tough spot. Um, the, the main issue is like the potential for co-location, or, or a combination of those, of those signs, and, you know, we could talk to him about, you know, building something that could, that could someday have another sign on it, an additional sign, one for Sorrel.
Yeah, I, I think, if, if I'm hearing the board right, though, this is a development issue with the ground signs, you know, along twenty-two and Old McHenry, whereas the building signs are a proprietor issue. And so, although Duncan may need it, and I don't dispute that, that needs to be done in a more collective way, than simply Duncan needs a sign, and so-
And Duncan may need to look at his landscaping and see-
Yeah, that might, that might solve some of the problems, too.
A, a, a wall sign, and getting rid of some-
And this isn't to say no to that, that, I think it's, if, again, I, I may be misreading what the conversation is, but as I'm hearing it, it sounds like we're ready for the wall signs. We wanna have a little more thought and maybe consideration of options on the ground signs, and that can come back, you know, either at the next meeting or whenever we're ready. And, uh, in the meantime, we'll also be telling them, and you might wanna come up with a landscaping plan that will enhance your vi- uh, your visibility.
But we're, we're losing one, one of those.
I just have a quick question. All these changes we're discussing, are those only for Long Grove Commons?
Yes.
None of that would apply to any of them?
Correct, they're a PUD, and we'd be doing it as an amendment to the PUD.
Okay.
So, okay, so is everyone in agreement with what Victor said about, you know, the wall sign, signs we're kind of okay with?
Yeah.
Advancing that, and then noodling more on the ground, uh, signs or whatever they are?
Yes. Can we say favorably noodling? Because I, I think it makes sense to do something different there, just because of the weird situation of those buildings.
Right, yeah, favorable in doing it, but is it, but the thing is, is you end up with, like, seven signs, or something crazy like that.
You could, you could.
Yeah, which is where you were headed and I was headed, correct, yeah.
Yeah, let's, let's get the wall sign.
Yeah, the, the manager of the association couldn't be here tonight, it sounds perfect, but I think if something needs to get his tenants together and see if they can agree on-
Yeah, well, that's even better.
Let's have him open that up, yeah, with the message that there's concern about proliferation.
Yep. Are we good? Okay, if we're good, I'm gonna move on. We're good? The Jess report, yes, the engineer's report. I didn't know what she was pointing to.
We may wanna invite our, uh, our youngest member of the audience, but-
Well, they changed your part signs, I was-
[laughing]
I'm holding for dinner, Wednesday.
Oh.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, they're, they're gonna be open at night, yeah, nine o'clock, starting on the twenty-ninth, is that right?
Yes, starting Wednesday.
Yeah, got it.
Oh, good luck.
That's great.
See me for dinner.
And the, and the days are, though, there's Wednesday through Sunday, when is it?
Yes, Wednesday through Sunday. Monday, Tuesday, we aren't open.
Yeah, I thought I saw that somewhere. Okay, excellent, thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you for, thank you for sticking with us.
Yeah. Hope you sleep well tonight.
Yeah, you're well.
Hope you drink much chocolate. All right, thank you, we love your restaurant, so, yes. All right, um, maybe a, a short report, huh?
Yeah, I'll be brief, the engineer's report's in the board packet, I'll, uh, highlight three things. Village Hall construction, we've got a coordination meeting on Wednesday to get an update. Major work going on right now is siding and the interior, uh, work, mostly the fire suppression system, but, uh, after Wednesday's meeting, we'll know a little bit more on the progress of each. It wasn't windy today, we didn't have siding flying all over the place, so there we go. Um, the road program, planning of that is ongoing. Uh, at the next board meeting, we'll have, uh, more information in the exhibits on both the Village Hall, and what we can do for solutions for parking to the west, and then also, uh, some more detail on the pathway and the archer outline, if you will. Uh, the other thing, the Deer Trail subdivision, construction is ongoing there, uh, the mass grading is almost nearly complete, and, uh, they're planning to start utility installations next week. Uh, little hiccup there, we don't have a permit to do that yet from the village, but, uh, Manager Sparkman and myself are, uh, working through the final details of that. So, uh, with that, if there's any other questions, um, happy to answer them, I didn't, uh, skip over anything on purpose, just in the interest of time.
Any questions? Thank you for the report. I have no report, Trusty Browski, do you have a report?
Not really, just a question, maybe to Chris, um, we're about ten weeks away from April first, so probably we just, I don't know, has the resident communication playing in on the transition to group?
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm, I don't know if you talked to-
Yeah, I can fill you in, we're still waiting on comments back on the contract.
Yeah, we, we sent, uh, the revised document with all the consolidated comments, and, um, I think it was last Thursday, and so we're waiting for any response back.
Yeah, I'll talk to Josh.
And it included Bobby's ideal for the larger recycling dent?
Yes.
Yes.
No report.
All right, uh, we're gonna move here, Trusty O'Connor. Trusty O'Reilly?
No.
Trusty Tanucci?
Nope.
Village manager?
Nope.
Um, anyone wanna make a motion?
Move adjourned?
Okay, moved by Trusty O'Reilly, seconded by Trusty Browski. All in favor? All in favor? All right, meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.